All righty. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the New Britain Board of Education to order. It's November 3rd and it is 6:01 PM. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ms. Rivera, if you can hear us, please.
Yes, ma'am. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Edwards, if you could call the roll.
Please. President Barbara Marino.
Here.
Vice President Diana Rayo.
Here.
Secretary Anthony Cane with the seat.
You.
Anthony Cane with the chair.
Here.
Ms. Andy Parker.
Here.
Ms. Jo Pina.
Here.
Ms. Amy Kuzowski.
Here.
Ah Jose Rivera.
Here.
And Ms. Tina Santin. Right here.
Thank you. Usually at this time we do a moment of meditation. I don't know if anybody has any... The islands. Yes.
Our former student.
Just... We're Puerto Rico, we're used to it. Go right ahead if you want to.
I would just like to, in our thoughts, have our former student Jaclyn Torres in our thoughts.
And I'd also like to add to that all the other children that have been impacted by this that are in our district. Thank you. I do want to add to that too, sir. I want to thank you and all this district staff for all that they've done to be sensitive to that situation and working with our kids and with the staff as well because many of our staff knew Jackie, Jaclyn, and her family. So I do appreciate all the things you have done, sir, and your team to put out those services and supports that are available for folks if they need it. In addition to that, I also want to thank you too for... And Ryan Langer as far as putting out information regarding food sources that are available to folks. I know there's a lot of concern with the whole SNAP benefit issue, but thank you to you and your staff too for that as well to try to quell that anxiety. Okay, public participation. No one signed up but anyone interested in speaking to the board? Going once, going twice, three times. All right, moving on to reports, sir. Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everybody. A pleasure to see everyone. We have a lot of really positive news to celebrate and some informational updates. As you'll see on your advanced copy of District Dispatch, we continue to, I believe rightfully, celebrate the Blue Ribbon status for Hal's. Hal's, as I said in my remarks there, Hal's has been a good school for a very long time. It's really the market improvement that Ms. Clerkin and her team have brought about over the past few years that have really brought the attention of the State Department of Education for this award, and that's actually one of the things they mentioned to me when they called about that. Similarly, as you saw in some of my other emails, it's a pleasure to recognize the fact that Smalling and Chamberlain School have joined North End for being removed from what's called turnaround status. That's basically the group of the lowest performing schools in the state. They had been on such status since 2015 and '16, I believe. Again, that's a tribute to hard work by teachers, administrators, parent educators, central office. That does not happen by chance. It's a lot of hard work, people really being willing to question what they're doing and how they can do it just a little bit better. As Ms. Marino stated, there's more news today about SNAP benefits for our residents. I do just want to remind everybody who might be watching that the district offers free meals, breakfast and lunch, every day that a student attends school. We wish we could expand that to weekends and such for people who are in need, but fortunately that's not possible under the regulations, but we do offer healthy meals, breakfast and lunch, every day that every student attends. I want to say thank you to Ms. Gonzalez and Mr. Valerio and the transportation team. We continue to make small, maybe even incremental, you might say, improvements in the transportation struggles we've had, but it is trending in the right direction. And I also do want to thank partners at First Student who made some very difficult management decisions on their end to try to improve services as well. I do want to remind people, as did the Board President, that we do have mental health services available. This is a struggling... It's a time of struggle for a lot of different reasons, whether it be food insecurity or other challenges that we have. Please do refer to the recent communications from the district about really a wide array of mental health services that are available. Want to congratulate and say thanks to our athletic team, so we're getting ready to kind of close out their season. It's always a pleasure to join in on those activities. I had to rush here from a really great example of partnership. So it's an idea we've been talking about for a while. I just came from the district's first family field trip hosted by Hartford Hospital right here at the Hospital of Central Connecticut, and the hospital staff really laid out a really nice welcome for about, I would say about 40 eighth graders and their families. And the point is to show these students that there's an organization right here in New Britain that wants them to come work there with a vast... And thank you to Ms. Gina Cohen, who is the regional president, really talking about it's not just doctors and nurses, it's all forms of really good and rewarding employment that can be had there. It was a pleasure just to give some quick remarks. And finally, we'll take a quick look through our District Dispatch. Thank you to... Pictured inside the first page is Mr. Ajit Gopalakrishnan, who represented the Commissioner. Thank you to the Commissioner for continuing the Blue Ribbon. Thank you to the Board members that were able to attend. Thank you to Representative DeFranzo, who attended, and thank you to Senator Murphy's office, who sent along a very nice certificate. Thank you on the next page to the Mayor. I want to wish her all the best, of course, and thank her for her support. There's a feature story about Hal's. And then an introduction to Ms. Alfano and her team. I commended Mr. Figat on the really clever calculator graphic on the right-hand page. 70 years of early college experience at New Britain High School. I just spoke about that when I spoke at the hospital, and I reminded the parents who didn't know already, just to remind all of us, early college experience is specific to UConn, but last year, 560 high school students got some form of college credit. And then it was a pleasure to recognize Ms. Nina Welch, former student here, who is really doing a lot to give back to the community by donating books. And with that, I'll wish anyone who's running for reelection tomorrow the best of luck.
All righty, thank you, sir. All right, committee reports. We'll start with policy.
We have one small item on the agenda, consent. It had to do with if there's a donation of an item such as a bench or a tree, how that will be handled.
Finance and transportation.
Finance, we met last week. Some of my favorite things, donations, and also a few purchase orders that are on the consent agenda as well.
All right. Personnel.
We have a very... We have two new positions on the consent agenda and one new child disruption.
Okay. And curriculum.
Again, another one item on the consent agenda for the New Britain High ESL Grammar and Writing One Course.
All right. Board reports.
I just want to say that the Hal celebration was amazing. It was a good experience to be there to celebrate with the kids. They were so energetic that it was... I had fun with them. The band.
Yeah.
Oh, my God. I can't believe their kids. They sang so great, performed great. So that was like the highlight for me, other than my son playing.
I second that. The kids' performances were amazing. Also, the NAACP Freedom Fund Dinner, two of our staff were recognized during that dinner. Alicia Hernandez Strong and Idalia Crespo were both honored that night.
Nice. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I went to an awful lot of trunk or treats, which worked out for me for the better because my kids were able to catch up with a lot of stuff that they had not seen in a while, and I was quite impressed that we were able to just come together. And I, just to also point out, I did also attend the E.C. Goodwin Truck or Treat slash Classic Car Show, which was great because it was the morning right after Di Loretto, and if I thought I was candied out, I definitely wasn't. So a lot of fun, and you know that a lot of our district students actually will go on to E.C. Goodwin, those who are motivated and apply themselves. And it was just wonderful seeing kids from the school district connect that I hadn't seen in a while, and so I was able to attend that and really had a good time. I just can't say enough. Also, I am one of those parents that went to the... Hold on, I'm going to turn to it because it's actually at the back of the District Dispatch, the Community Forum. I attended the one in Osgood Park right over here on October 22nd. I thought it was well-attended. Anyplace there's three or more Jesus is there, so you know, I was happy for that. So we had a good time, and it was great conversation, and hoping to see what they cover next time and see what goes on, so.
I'm just jumping off of that. I did speak to Evie, but the staff that were there were amazing. They were compassionate, they made themselves available to parents, they were really great. They did a great job.
I just wanted to echo what Superintendent said about the E.C. program at New Britain High. I didn't realize you had been doing it for 70 years. I'm the psych coordinator at my school, which we're now in our second year, and every time I talk to UConn, one of the first things they say is, "You're on New Britain School Board, checking New Britain High, they're a kick-off program there, they recommend, always talk to you guys." And one thing I would brag about from New Britain High's program, you had a student last year graduating with 81 E.C.E. credits. That student is starting as junior. So when people talk about how, you know, why would somebody want to go to New Britain Schools? You know, the magnet schools are so much better. Look at the opportunities that we have, and you can start... The E.C. program is a great opportunity, and for this... When UConn itself brags how well-run our E.C. program is, and I count with, kind of, 280 different E.C. programs throughout the state, and for them to consider New Britain High as one of the best in the state, that says something.
We get a bad rap.
It is. It's a bad rap, though it's an undeserved rap.
Undeserved, exactly. The only other thing I have is Senior Night is coming up for football. Friday. And they are doing a food collection too, as well as part of before the game. Sorry, Mr. Kane, you had something?
Nope, that's what I was going to say.
Oh, okay. Great minds think alike, okay. All righty, student reports. Hello, ladies.
Hello. I'd like to share a few positives I've seen around our district recently. I think our teachers consistently still have demonstrated a lot of flexibility and availability when it comes to helping students who are struggling or need to stay after school. As for elementary school, I know you guys already mentioned the trunk or treat. My little sister went to that, she... It was really good. A lot of the parents were really happy to be there. And as for middle school, Hal's, as you mentioned, was recognized for the Blue Ribbon School... As a Blue Ribbon School, sorry. And that's a really significant accomplishment and that should be sought out. And like you said, high school plans to have a Senior Night this Friday. That's going to be honoring the football team, the band members, and the cheer team. As for areas of improvement, I'm still working on gathering some more input, but we are working on having a student council at high school. That way we can kind of discuss and allow students to kind of voice their opinions and areas that they need, we can improve on. We've been kind of doing that in our school, and I spoke with our principal, Mr. Pierce, and something that we thought was kind of unfair at our school and that we're working on inside of our school is raising the school spirit, just because I think that the more connected and the more unity we can build between the students in the grade, the more positive it will be, and I think that will really help shift our kind of narrative around the whole school. And as for elementary and middle school, I haven't visited them yet, but I'm definitely working on going there and kind of seeing what changes needs to be made and what's already going well.
So kind of piggybacking off of what she said about school spirit, me and a few other people have been in coordination with Mr. Pierce, thinking about starting a powder puff league at our school. It's still very early in the works, but if we can get everything in motion and we can figure out all the logistics, we think it would be a really great way to build unity and school spirit for the senior and the junior class, and it would be a sort of a legacy thing that we could build on for future generations.
Nice, nice. Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion for school spirit that I've seen in a lot of other towns? It's a student section at home games, very common, very popular in a lot of schools, but love to see that, especially at our football games. Fantastic.
Thank you both.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business. Can I have a motion to approve minutes from the regular meeting of October 6th?
Six.
Second.
Any changes, comments? Get it in one last time. Mr. Kane, your name's spelled right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mine is also. I couldn't do this.
Your spell's right.
All right. Seeing no questions or changes, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we're all good. All right. Item B. Need a motion to approve Personnel Transaction Report?
So moved.
So it's my pleasure really to present the Board with two very, very highly qualified candidates for our two openings for Assistant Principal. I ask them both, one at a time, to come to the mic just to introduce themselves to you. We're going to start with Ms. Tasha Bernadelle. She's the candidate for the Chamberlain Elementary School Assistant Principalship. Ms. Bernadelle is an experienced Assistant Principal. She's fluent in Spanish and notably for Chamberlain School, also fluent in American Sign Language. Welcome. Can I say a few words at the podium?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to... I don't know why I'm trying to make this up when I definitely prepared something. Be very honest. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity to come in front of you, and I am truly honored and grateful to be here, to join this wonderful community. And it is very clear that this district is filled with dedicated and passionate and caring people, and I just feel so lucky pending Board approval to be able to be a part of it. I look forward to just being here and hearing all the things that everyone has to say, and I'm just very grateful. I do have a correction in reference to my fluency and reference to ASL. I am still in the process of learning American Sign Language. My brother is part of the deaf community, and so it was wonderful living in a multilingual household of Spanish-speaking, ASL, and English. Now he is much older than me and has gone, and y'all know that practice makes perfection, so I look forward to hopefully being able to continue that practice.
Thank you. And next, a face and name that might be familiar, Mr. Salvador Escobales. Perhaps there's still a chair over there.
Wait, yeah, wait a minute. Who you? Who you?
Hi, everybody. Hi, everybody.
I wonder where you went.
Yeah, really.
I mean, I had something to write, but I, you know, I don't know what to say at this point. I'm kind of just overwhelmed in my little thing I had said that, you know, I've had homecomings. Some of you guys know I was a veteran, and I'm a Gulf War veteran, and I remember that homecoming, and, you know, the love of my life was there, waiting on the plane, when I got off the plane, and now I have another one of my loves of my life right there. It's just an honor and a privilege. I want to, you know, just say thank you to you all. I never got a chance to say goodbye to all you collectively, so... But I'm not going anywhere really now, so it's good to come home. It's really an honor and a pleasure to be here. You know, I've sort of been getting more and more anxious since we get closer and closer. Most of you know I'm a child of the school system, you know, Vance, Slade in New Britain High School, my children are, you know... Sammy's not here because she's home studying so she could work for her on here one day. Our DLO in high school kids, you know, I went to Central, I never really left, other than a little bit of time in the military, you know, I'm a father to those kids, I'm a father to tons of students, you know, the Marino family, a bunch of others. So it's an extreme pleasure to be here, and now, you know, sort of in that military, you know, I'm happy to serve the Joint Chiefs of Staff, the General of the Army, Lieutenant General of the Army. There's Tyron Lieutenant General, Brigadier General over there. But just stoked to be back, I really, you know, it really just means a lot. It was, I assured you all, for the public, it was a very rigorous process. There was a lot around, so, you know, it speaks to, you know, what we want here, you know, in New Britain, what we want in front of our kids. So again, I'm honored, I'm looking forward to the work, and just looking forward to just being in partnership with you all to get the work done. So two weeks away, and, you know, we'll see you soon, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
So as Mr. Escobales indicated, we do take these processes very seriously with multiple rounds. I believe as I updated the Board in one of my emails, we had right around 100 applicants for each of the two positions, and I take that as a very good sign. It shows that people are looking at us as a district where they want to serve. And I'd also like to thank not only the various staff, but the students who participated in the interview process, the teachers, administrators, and parents were all represented at various times throughout the interview process. So both of these candidates come with my highest recommendations to the Board.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and we have a second.
I'll move reluctantly.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I just want to say that I've known Sal most of his life. And he used to hang out with my son, and I can remember this time I decided I was home at work every summer, was the summer that they all spent at my house, in and out, and while they played. I'd rather be at work than to be here, so I got a babysitter at work, and they were there. But I just want to say that I know how dedicated he is, and I know how he's invested in New Britain, and I think that he's going to do a wonderful job. Love him.
I got to know Sal, where I used to be the outdoors teacher at St. Mary's, and I got to know him very well then, but he was actually a very active parent there. And then when he got elected, people were like, "Oh, well, you're going to be sitting next to Sal. He's a Democrat, he's a union person." And I was sitting next to him. I love sitting next to Sal. I mean, he was a buddy almost, so I was very sad when I heard you were going, but you're going to be greater at New Britain High.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations to both of you. I would like to point out, I think it's entirely appropriate and closes the circle, that it sounds like Sal's last day in Manchester is the same day we go up to Manchester with the football team. Keep us on without any negative feelings.
I will stand there with both shirts on.
With both shirts on, straddling that line, all right.
I'll wear yellow sneakers, old sneakers, a little wearout too. And I applaud the new Assistant Principal, the fact that she is learning Sign Language. At my school, we had one of the first people became, get sealed by literacy in ASL. So I would love to see eventually a New Britain High person, there's a challenge that we get, a New Britain High person someday get sealed by literacy in ASL. Let me see it becoming a fast-growing field someday.
I just want to say congratulations to you both and Sal. I learned a lot from you in the time that I sat on this board. Great, great man, and I can see the dedication that you have towards this district, your district that you're leaving now, to come back home, so we appreciate it.
I'm going to be the last one to speak. I have to be because this is just fingers crossed.
Are we getting ready?
Listen, super quick, but everybody knows I do this for the free soda, sometimes some free coffee and a salad I get that has no hang. So if you were willing to give up the food you never ate, the soda you never drank, but the warm swivel chair that we had over here for you, you gave it all up. To go back to New Britain High School, I applaud you. Congratulations, and congratulations. I love seeing Latinas moving up, so I always celebrate that. My roots are in San Juan. I always celebrate everybody who just wants to get ahead and speak Spanish, and Sign Language is fun, so.
All right. Thank you. And I just wanted to say congratulations to you both, but Sal, like I said, we were sad for us because we've learned so much from you. You were just such a great advocate, but we know that we can still count on you when we need to. But so happy for New Britain High for getting you, it's wonderful.
Thank you.
I'll talk to you later.
Kudos to you too, Sal. It was short, but I learned a lot from you. Congratulations and God bless.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, should we put it to a vote?
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome. Dr. Sanders has a small token of thanks and welcome for each of you. Thank you, Dr. Sanders. We usually do take pictures, yeah. Dr. Sanders, can you make sure we get a picture before they both depart? A picture of them together?
Oh, with you?
No, we... I'm kind of working with the Board right now. Usually, I think usually Ms. Langer takes the candidates into the lobby and snaps a photo, so we're going to have a photo of them together. Thank you.
All right, send me a copy.
Yeah, see, Andrea's got it. All right, moving on. Enrollment report?
As usual, you have it before you. Slightly down, just six students down in the main report, however, notice 66 students up in the pre-K report. We do anticipate those numbers to fluctuate. As an interesting aside, in getting ready for budget season, I actually engaged Google's Gemini, the portion called Deep Research, in doing an enrollment projection for next year, and the degree to which it was scientific and based on fact, and I gave it all kind of historical data, we would typically spend, I don't know... Ms. Gonzalez, what do we spend for the third-party enrollment projections typically for our... Do you know off the top of your head?
About $8,000.
$8,000. This was at least of equal quality, and it was produced in three minutes for free. And I always say that just to highlight the power of AI as it continues. It is scary. However, this report, and it said it was using calculation techniques that I had never heard of, so I actually had to check to make sure that it wasn't hallucinating, and sure enough, it was. I mean, these were the right techniques to use, and it was saying, oh, you... The Brit apartment building is new to the city, however, it knew how many units within the Brit were one-bedroom or studio, and it actually said those usually don't generate students, so it didn't really count those into the calculation.
Oh, my God.
I'll share it with the Board at some point in the near future, so it was very, very impressive, and it's...
Wow.
I'm not sure if the State Department will ever get to a point where they accept enrollment projections from AI, but this was at least as good as the ones I've seen from the third-party contractors, so.
I got to give a professional development to my school today staff on using AI, and I actually mentioned the different ways that you have been using AI for everything from your evaluations and including your flowers and your color, like the way you could use AI. It's amazing the ways you do work making easier.
Yeah, and it really comes down to, do you know how to prompt it well, prompt it effectively? And if you're curious, its projection was basically flat for us. I think it projected us to be up by 61 students next year, so relatively flat, but super interesting, and I'll share with the Board at some point in the near future.
All right, that's just informational.
Informationally, yes.
Moving on to item D. Moving on to item D, motion to approve new position request after-school club advisors.
You'll find that items D and E are nearly identical. These are paid for and encouraged by the SIG grant at both schools, and part of that grant is required to support school climate and culture.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve item D?
Similar.
Second. Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All righty, so, so item E, motion for item E, which is similar, but for Pulaski instead of Slade.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, motion and second. So any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Okay, moving on to item F, motion to approve superintendent's contract.
Similar.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Everybody should have gotten a previous copy of all of that ahead of time. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Thank you. I appreciate your support, and it continues to be a pleasure to serve the kids in New Britain.
Thank you for everything you do.
So any, before going to consent agenda, is there any items that folks want to have removed from the consent agenda? All right, so motion to approve consent agenda?
Similar. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, and any other business as permitted by law?
I do want to echo before we close Dr. Gasper's earlier comments. Good luck to everyone here. After tomorrow, who knows what the sample will look like, so.
Do you want to make a note just about the organization meeting, the date and time?
Yes, we do have our, November 12th is our special annual meeting once elections are over and folks are ordained, so to speak. And that'll be the 12th Wednesday here at 6:00 PM. For those who are going to be on the board going forward. I would like to say it's been absolutely a thrill to work with all of you guys. It really has. It's been quite the experience, and I do appreciate, I do, no, I, it really has been very educational. I think we have a really great mojo, for lack of a better way of putting it. And I hope that does continue going forward, regardless of what happens. Okay? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Aye, aye, okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good evening, everyone.